Welcome to the City of Everett Planning Commission Tuesday, August 17th, 2021 meeting. Kathy, could we have a, this is a call to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Acting Chair Lavra?
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
And Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, I will give the instructions to participants. While we are carefully making our way out of the state of emergency brought on by the pandemic, planning commission meetings remain remote for the time being. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six until called upon. Thank you for your patience and stay tuned in the coming weeks for more information about bringing the planning commission back to in-person meetings. If the commissioners have had a chance to review the minutes, do we have a motion or any comments or approvals the minutes of the July 20th, 2021 meeting?
Acting Chair Lavra, this is Michael Finch. I move to approve the meetings. Or excuse me, I move to approve the minutes from the meeting of July 20th, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I would second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Can we have a roll call?
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins? Commissioner Atkins, you're still muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Acting Chair Lavra?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any reports from the commissioners? Hearing no reports, we can move on to staff comments, please.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. I'm Yorick Stevens-Wajda, Planning Director. I almost reverted to council staff. First off, thank you Commissioner Lavra for stepping up to fill in as acting chair this evening. Much appreciated and so far, so good. I hope everyone is having a pleasant summer, getting their fill of peaches and tomatoes, and most of all, staying safe and healthy. Just a few updates this evening before we get started on today's briefings and action items. So after some hopeful words and some of those carried through into the chairs' comments just previously here about reopening and getting in-person planning commissions meetings back together last month, we've obviously regressed back a little bit into the pandemic phase. I won't even try to guess where we go from here as a city, a state, and a country and all that with the pandemic, but it probably almost goes without saying that we're going to wait a bit before taking any further steps towards in-person meetings and otherwise togetherness. So unfortunate, of course, we'll stay tuned to the latest developments and I would like to see us bring these meetings back together in person so we can meet each other and hear from the public in person and just have a little bit more of a smooth meeting flow, but we will not do that until the right time. Just a few updates at the countywide level. The Buildable Lands Report you were briefing on earlier this year has cleared the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee and is now with the County Council. They received a briefing on it this morning at Planning Committee. I haven't watched that yet to see how it goes, but Everett did get some attention in the council staff report and the materials as the city with the capacity shortfall and the need for reasonable measures as part of our upcoming comprehensive plan update. Not news to you who have heard the briefings a couple of times on Buildable Lands. The countywide planning policies, which will set the parameters for our comprehensive plan update and provide some guidance for that, have also been sent from the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee to the County Council, but the council hasn't received a briefing on that yet. Staff from this planning department will follow both of those projects and comment to the County Council if necessary. Planning for light rail continues unabated and it's almost time for the process to go public with an early scoping notice probably in the next month or two. So you'll start to hear more out in the community about potential alignment, station locations, and operations and maintenance facility sites. Realignment with Sound Transit concluded as well. That was an effort to to realign the project after some troubling news about reduced revenues and increased costs in all of the extensions that Sound Transit is working on as part of the ST3. But at least the Sound Transit Board has been able to get through that process and has settled on a timeline and a prioritization of the projects in ST3. And that would bring light rail to Everett between 2036 and 2041, depending on the station and whether we'll be able to close the financial gap with either cost savings or new revenue. Looks likely that there will be an interim terminus somewhere between Mariner Station and downtown Everett, maybe around the southwest Everett Industrial Station Center for about five years. Again, that's all in flux a bit as we work on the financial aspects of ST3. Related to light rail, State Department of Commerce will soon announce the winning proposal for a state-funded project that is called Technical Assistance for Affordable Housing and Equitable Transit Oriented Development in the Puget Sound Region, quite a mouthful, that actually targeted specifically the communities of Tacoma, Everett, and Renton for some technical assistance by a consultant group. And it will provide, at the end of that process, some strategies to promote equitable transit-oriented development around one of Everett's station areas. Not exactly sure until we find out who's going to be leading that project going forward. We'll definitely keep you posted on that. Ties in very well with some of the topics we're speaking on today. Rethink Housing and the Corporate Supply Plan Periodic Update. So always happy to get some support from the state and their consultant partners for making our station areas the best that they can be. And then lastly, we'll be briefing the City Council on the Home Occupation Ordinance tomorrow evening, and we will report back at the next planning commission meeting on how that went. Does anyone have any questions for me on any of those topics? Otherwise, we will launch into the first part of our comprehensive plan amendments for 2021 and just an update on rethink housing with a recommendation to you to make recommendations to the City Council.
Without any questions, we can ask whether there are any citizen comments that are unrelated to the agenda items this evening. I gather we're having no citizen comments, right? Kathy?
Yeah, I do have one guest tonight, Eileen Mitchell, and I don't know if she's here on one of the agenda items or whether she'd like to speak. But if you would like to speak, provide testimony at this time on an item not on the agenda, please unmute your phone to let us know.
Well, thank you for checking that.
She, Eileen, did unmute her phone. Were you going to provide some testimony, Eileen? Okay, she muted.
And we'll, I think, though we usually have another chance at the end of the meeting, just in case, too.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Agenda Item 1.
Thank you very much. I'm Karen Stewart, environmental planner here at the city, and I do have a few slides that I would like to show you. So let me set up sharing my screen, so please hold for a minute.
And we received your note. In the meantime, Eileen, no, we did not hear anything, but received the message that you will not be providing comment this evening. Thank you for joining us, though.
Okay, Yorick, can you see my slideshow okay?
Looking good.
All right, very good. So tonight, we're beginning discussion about a number of docket items. And just to refresh your memory, the docket cycles are established and regulated under the State Growth Management Act for comprehensive plan amendments and related zoning changes, and they are to be completed on an annual basis. And then what we are going to be doing, because we have a number of docket items, is we will, over the course of two of your meetings, be giving these briefings. And then towards the end of September, at your second meeting, we'll bring them all together and have a public hearing on the entire docket. So tonight, I'll be discussing these two docket items. The first one is Hartison Road Conference of Plan Amendment and Rezone. And then the second item, which I've titled Smith Island Map Amendments, are your agenda items number two and three. So beginning with the Hartison Road Proposed Amendments, this is an approximately 1.32-acre site privately owned and located at the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Hartison Road and 75th Street Southwest. It is currently developed as a 7-Eleven convenience store with gasoline pumps. The application that we've received states that the property owner would like to have their zoning reflect the nature of how the site is currently used and developed, which is commercial, and it has been zoned light industrial, too. And why they would like it to be rezoned to commercial is to permit flexibility to redevelop the site for future commercial uses, although they don't have any plans on changing that right now. But they would like to continue operating the convenience store that supports everyday needs of employees located nearby, working in the various industrial businesses in the area. So initially, they requested a rezone from the light industrial 2-2 business, but when staff looked at what the comprehensive plan designation stated, we found that it's industrially designated, and so that necessitated a change to the comp plan designation, sorry. So this map shows you Conference of Plan Amendment proposed, which is on the left-hand side. So going from the current designation industrial to commercial mixed use. And then on the right-hand side of the screen is the corresponding zoning that's been requested. So right now, the site is zoned light industrial, too, and the property owner through their applicant has requested that it be rezoned to business. And this is essentially fine-tuning the zoning after our rethink zoning, where we had changed zoning with a fairly broad brush in this area. So y'all notice you have staff reports describing the process and the proposal as well as providing analysis and the criteria that must be met in order to change the map designations as well as the zoning designation. And one thing you might notice with the staff reports is that we have a new format that includes at the back a draft resolution that we are not doing the public hearing tonight, so you are not going to be asked to to make a motion about the resolution. But we have tried to integrate the staff reports with this new format, so hopefully you will find that helpful to anticipate what eventually you will be asked to make motions on. So in terms of highlights of the staff report from the analysis, there were just a few items I wanted to touch upon. So the existing use on the site was legally established under the zoning at that time. So the rezone request is consistent with what that zoning was, the commercial. And then the Conference of Plan Land Use Designation, I described it. It has to be changed in order to have consistency and allow the requested rezone to business. Now, in doing the review of the Conference of Plan Policies, you'll notice in our staff report, we call out specific ones that would be consistent with allowing this change in the designation and allowing land use that serves the nearby employees. And presumably, people could even walk there on their lunchtime since it is an employment center. So we, staff does recommend approval of these two map changes subject to a public hearing, which will occur September 21st. And I will pause there to see if there are any questions on this particular request to change the comp plan designation and rezone at 7,500 Hartison Road.
Okay, we should start with commissioner questions or discussion? Do we have any? Let's see. Someone has their hand raised. Michael Finch, please?
Yeah, my only comment is I like this format with the proposed draft resolution attached. I think that's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? At that, if we do not, let's move on to public questions or comments?
I just have the one guest tonight, and she's already indicated that she's not going to be providing public comment tonight, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we could move on to Agenda Item 2 then.
Okay. All right, so Agenda Item 2, as well as Agenda Item 3, I'm going to be discussing in this next series of slides. So collectively, I'm calling them the Smith Island Annexation Map Amendments, and they're a result of the city annexing the western peninsula of Smith Island. And when an annexation is approved, it does have to be approved by the state, and that now has all happened, and the property has been correspondingly rezoned also. But there are additional official city maps that staff has been looking at to implement, effectuate essentially the annexation. Obviously, we need to revise city limits, and then there were a couple of planning maps that we've been looking at and are recommending changes to. The first one relates to the Conference of Plan Land Use Designation map with the designation Local Resource Lands, and staff is proposing that that be removed for water areas adjacent to Smith Island. And I will show you a map after this, a series of maps after this slide that illustrate that. And then the second proposed map amendment relates to our zoning code, and there is a map designating areas like this, industrial areas for maximum building heights. And staff is recommending that this area that has been annexed recently on Smith Island be designated for a maximum of seven floors, similar to its surrounding area. And again, I'll show you the actual map. Okay, so going back to the local resource lands designation. So you see on the left-hand side, so we're talking Smith Island, north end of the city, and then the map inset there on the lower left-hand corner, I'd like to direct your attention to the different tones of greens. So the uplands of Smith Island are shown in sort of that olive green. And then there's a brighter darker green that you'll notice in the very west portion, left portion. That's the areas that we're talking about. So you can kind of look back and forth, toggle, if you will, between the left-hand inset screen, which is the currently adopted local resource lands designations in our comp plan map. And the one on the right is what staff is proposing now to show essentially the darker green areas that are covered with water, at least part of the day. So these are tideland areas, would be illustrated on our maps as the blue color indicating the water. And then I'll explain this other map, and then if you've got any questions, certainly I'll be happy to answer those. So this is a map that's within our code, zoning code. And it's called map 22-1, and it's illustrating what the maximum building heights are based on floors. And so in this case, with the northern portion there of Smith Island, we, our staff is recommending that it be designated for the seven-floor maximum, which is consistent with the floor limits on the entire surrounding area. So we have a staff report, a similar format to the one that we just, we're discussing, where we do have the draft resolution attached in the back. These map amendments are proposed to implement the approved annexation, and there are different criteria that we use for the different types of map amendments. So in the case of the comp plan map amendments, the criteria are in EMC 15.03.400D. And then the zoning development regulations and changing the map within the code. The criteria for that review is in EMC 15.03.300C. And our staff report details the particulars of those criteria, and the proposed amendments have been found by staff to be consistent with those criteria. And so staff is recommending that these two map amendments be approved subject to a public hearing and comments that may be received on September 21st. So just in general, the docket items for your, for planning commission, we will be bringing forward for your first meeting in September, I think that's the 7th. We'll have some additional items related to updating our parks element and other aspects of our parks planning and funding. And then by the September 21st, staff will have had a chance to complete environmental review of those items and do the required noticing for the public hearing, which will be held September 21st. So that concludes my two briefings tonight. I guess I'll pause there and see if anybody has any questions about these Smith Island Annexation Amendment maps or anything else about the process.
Thank you for explaining the process, Karen. That makes it clear. Do we have any commissioner comments or questions? I think you could just speak up. Okay, thank you. I think we've heard your explanations, and they were very clear, so I think we could move on to Agenda Item 4.
Great. Well, good evening, commissioners, and hope you're enjoying your evening. And we're pleased to be here tonight to present to you the Housing Committee's Recommended Housing Action Plan. And we've been briefing you along the way. And so tonight, what I'm going to do here, I'm going to get my PowerPoint presentation ready. And just someone could let me know when they see my presentation.
I see it.
Great, thank you. So tonight, just a little bit about the process schedule that we are on. We had this open for a pretty significant comment period. We've done a community outreach activity. We did actually three chat sessions, and I'll describe the outcome of those. And then we are also hosting a developer, well, a forum that talks about how housing gets built. I'm really pleased about how that is shaping up, and I hope you will be able to attend. We definitely will have it on the website. If you aren't able to see it at live, we will definitely have it for you to take a look at. But our Economic Development Director will be hosting. But our Economic Development Director will be hosting a panel of market rate and affordable housing developers, just to talk about challenges and opportunities, and really help us and the community understand why it's so important for us to be doing this Housing Action Plan. So that is scheduled for August 26th. It's at 1:00 PM. Our website, excuse me, our website should be updated sometime tomorrow. And we will make sure that you get a notification specifically about how to access that meeting. So tonight is your update. We are asking and hoping that you will be able to take action on a resolution that would support this, letting the mayor and council know that you are supporting the action plan. We're currently scheduled to do a council briefing on the 8th of September. And then we will be asking council to take action on the 15th. We have a little bit of time built in there. You can see about a month, but we are obligated, since this was funded by a grant, to give our final product to Commerce by the 15th of October. And then the exciting part is, if council passes this, then we can start work on some short-term actions at the beginning of the year. A little bit about the project process and background. First, a little bit why we're doing this. We've recognized through our housing needs assessment that, that there's definitely a need we are experiencing, along with other people in the region, as well as all over the United States, that we're having an availability and an affordability housing prices. Everett is the largest city in Somme County. We're expected to take the largest portion of growth, and we're experiencing those growth pressures right now. We're seeing our homeless population has been growing. You probably know about all of those challenges, and certainly can't solve homelessness without housing. We know that we're going to be planning for new growth for a new planning period, and that's going to be starting, we're going to be starting that planning here end of this year, early next year. And so again, we're going to be adding growth that we need to accommodate on top of the growth that we're trying to accommodate. We know through this process too, that we've got some displacement risks. And those risks, I'll talk a little bit more about those specifically, relate to the light rail projects that are coming forward in all of our transit-oriented places. So we'll talk more in depth about that. Some of this work was rethink zoning follow-up work. And that had specifically to do with looking at different housing types in our single-family neighborhoods. And then, of course, making sure that we've got equitable opportunities for housing throughout the city. So in terms of the process, the State Department of Commerce gave us $100,000 grant to complete this process. We had some consultants working with us. The mayor appointed a housing committee, and some of the planning commissioners were on, appointed to that committee, along with others. That committee worked throughout the process. The committee participated in many of the community forums and the community chat sessions. And then, as I said earlier, we've been keeping the planning commission and city council up to speed on where we are with the project. So just to recap a little bit about the needs. In our housing needs assessment, we did recognize that there's an affordability issue at pretty much all income levels, particularly at the, the lower income levels and even the homeless population. But, but it stretches the, the spectrum. We know that housing density and mixed use, especially in metro, is where we need that type of housing, and near that high-capacity transit corridor to make sure that we are taking advantage of those transit investments, and that the community benefits from that. Accessory dwelling units were definitely something that, that the community has a need for. It serves population, different populations. And then talking about the housing types and sustainable building practices. If I go back to the accessory dwelling units and talk a little bit about what we consider sort of that missing middle housing, those, those opportunities can be housing for, for young families that want to move into the community, or seniors that want to stay in the community, but they're ready to move out of their home. But there really isn't that, that middle-sized housing, or that, even that middle-income housing that we're missing here in the community. And some of those also missing middle are, are opportunities for homeownership and wealth building for those folks. And then again, we talked about the displacement need, displacement risks and protections that we need. So, key finding, some of these are overlapped, but that the current housing supply and production is not meeting demand. Housing costs are continuing to rise. I just saw an article in the news today about single-family home rentals have gone up, I don't know, 7% just in the last year. So the pandemic has not kept any housing prices down. We also know from our research and analysis that renters in the community tend to be proportionately experiencing more housing cost burden. And just as a reminder, the housing cost burden is when households are paying more than 30% of their income for their housing and their utilities. And many of our renters are paying more than 50%. What happens to those households is they have to make choices about where they spend their dollars, their other dollars. And sometimes that can affect, you know, basic needs, such as their food, or their transportation, or their, or their daycare. So we know that renters are, are struggling. Many renters are struggling. And that the displacement risks tend to be along transit corridors. We've got a few of those. I think of Broadway, definitely, Evergreen Way. And then as we talk about light rail and anywhere that we would see development occur around those areas. So we have been busy throughout the summer, doing some additional outreach on the, to talk to people about the committee's recommended plan. We did a chat session on July 29th, and we did a couple of them on August 12th. So we did a afternoon, and we did an evening one on the 12th. So just want to share some of the comments that we received during both of those sessions. And again, it has been very difficult to get a lot of people out and attending. We will continue to try to do that. We've got a lot more work coming up in planning, and we want to make sure that we're able to reach the folks that we want to hear from. So there's definitely acknowledgement that we need new units, that we need units that are affordable. There was discussion about the need for a set-aside. That is, in each housing development, having a required set-aside of affordable units, like a rent-restricted unit. Often, we refer to that as inclusionary zoning. This state doesn't necessarily, state law doesn't support inclusionary zoning. However, if you can give somebody something in exchange for that affordable, those affordable units, you can give them bonuses, density bonuses. And we definitely have that on the books, but it's not quite working yet. Excuse me. We did hear some comments about really wanting the city council to take this opportunity to be bold in their actions, and that possibly they, the community and the elected officials need more education, because there are some folks in the community that are frustrated by some of the NIMBYism. And for folks that don't know that acronym, it's not in my backyard. But the, the folks that we talked to the other day just feel like that's very exclusionary. We talked about having mixed-income properties, making sure that we're not concentrating low-income housing all in one area. Definitely, again, the support of the accessory dwelling unit, that equity is important. Some of the comments we got, you received in writing. So there were three comment letters that were received. There is still concern about the, the townhouse development being added to the single-family zones, just because of maybe their height. So again, making sure that when taking a look at possibly adding those different housing types, single-family neighborhoods, making sure that we're protecting conflicts, and that we're making sure the designs really do fit into the neighborhood. I've heard over and over again that the strategy around looking at the city surplus lands for potential housing development is important. And let's see, there was also a comment I wanted to point out. I talked about updating our housing needs assessment. It is a little bit a few years old. And it would be great if we could update that housing needs assessment. But I think, you know, we've just gotten new census data, and we are going into our comprehensive plan update. So there, there will be a need to update it at that point. And so that would be the more appropriate place to, to update it. But nonetheless, that housing needs assessment does show us kind of our baseline for who needs housing as we move forward. We did give a presentation to the NAACP. We've been working to try to follow up with a couple of, of their members to do a more in-depth discussion about their input and what they see as needs for their members. We were able to give a presentation to the IBEW, International Brotherhood of Electric, Electrical Workers, if I can have that right, who are very supportive and recognize the need. The Rotary is going to allow us to give a presentation at their meeting next Tuesday. And I just want to thank Charles Atkins. He was the chair for the housing committee, and he's been able to help us make those connections to try to get out more word. And then you did receive three written comment letters. One of them was in your packet, and two of them, I believe Kathy has forwarded to you via email. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the, the strategies, and they are around these areas of focus. I'm certainly not going to read every single one. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to take a look at the plan, but I just want to highlight some of those. I think you'll find that as we move through each area of focus, that they sort of build an overlap on each other. So increasing housing variety, we'll talk about some of that in the developing on urban corridors. And then on urban corridors, it overlaps with the transit-oriented development. And then obviously affordability and displacement can be everywhere. Increasing housing variety, we're, both strategies and actions really focused around taking a look at our accessory dwelling unit regulations and process. I'm, I'm just surprised that we had changed, I think I mentioned this to you before, we had changed our regulations in May of 2020. And over that time, we have seen an increase in permits for accessory dwelling units, where prior to that, it was maybe barely a tickle, trickle of permits coming through. So there's, there's something there. I think there's further work that we can do to promote ADUs. Look, taking a look at how we can facilitate greater housing diversity and production, making sure though that we're being very deliberate about how we establish design guidelines for those new developments, so that we're, we're aligning with the neighborhoods as opposed to creating conflicts. We've got some work to do in the comprehensive plan around housing, and some of that has been state mandated. And then you're also going to see in all three, those first three, taking the opportunity to look at parking minimums. That is always a challenge. And so we've got to get the right, the bright parking next, because parking tends to be one of the most expensive parts of developing. Therefore, it can, it can be a deterrent. And then the other thing that you're going to see in all three of these areas, four of these areas, is we will be doing monitoring efforts. So as we move along, we will be monitoring and making sure that some of the strategies and actions that we're implementing actually are giving us the outcomes that we hope. And if not, why? Do they need to be changed or updated, or they just, they just don't work? So that'll be something that we do throughout this process. So I'll move on to development on urban corridors. And that's just really, again, taking a look at, are there areas where we can increase the opportunity for different housing types, particularly where we are in proximity to, to transit services? When we do that, we want to make sure that there are the right non-motorized facilities. So the idea being, and this is also true in the transit-oriented community, is the idea being people can get out, they don't have to use their cars to get their, maybe even get to work, get the daily service needs. But again, it requires that infrastructure, non-motorized infrastructure, and sort of helping to make those complete communities. We, as part of this, want to make sure that we do have some incentives on the books for affordable housing. And there hasn't been anybody that's taken advantage of that yet. So we are proposing to do a more in-depth study about how to calibrate those incentives to actually, again, get the outcomes that we're looking for. I think the other important thing about urban corridors is to make sure that we're, one, the environmental quality, that we're paying attention to, you know, air, water, all of those environmental qualities, because you are near more transit, more vehicles. And that the street skates are appropriate for the corridors. With that, I'm going to move into transit-oriented communities. We want to make sure, I think it's really important, and, and I think this is going to be a big piece of work as we move into implementation, but really to coordinate long-term preservation of TOD sites. And that just takes some analysis and forethought about what those, where those TOD sites are, what that might look like. Again, diversifying those housing types in transit station areas. And we really want to make sure that we are Ensuring that our uh, code requirements are streamlined to facilitate development. And I think that the rethink housing, or excuse me, the rethink zoning was uh, beginning of that effort. Uh, we're, you're going to see coming up here in the next few months, some. Uh, things that we're going to need to do to change that, that was a big project and sometimes um. When you do a big overhaul like that, uh, there tends to be some unintended consequences and they don't show up till. So you start using the code, so um. That'll be something that you're going to see over the next couple of years as we uh, work through that new code. Um, in terms of transit oriented development, again, making sure that we're reducing or preventing conflicts. With the surrounding neighborhood, but also looking at opportunities where we can maybe provide a more. Um, transition area between the high density and the single family zone. Um. Trying to think if there's, uh, we want to make sure that if there's a, opportunity for affordable housing options, so. Again, taking a look at uh, what we can do for um. Incentives and not necessarily inclusionary or mandatory, but um. But more um, attractive for wanting to include affordable housing in projects. Making sure that we're putting our public investment around those areas. And um, long-term monitoring, definitely, and, and as Yorick mentioned. Just we're working with Sound Transit now and melting so far away that it's not too early to be discussing. Um, how things will occur over time. And finally, affordability and displacement, so we uh, one of the strategies around that is taking a look at. Uh, does the city need to help provide more protections for tenants? And when I say that too, I'm, I'm also speaking about landlords, so. We want to protect the tenants and the landlords because it's not always, it's not a one-way street, but um, making sure that. We take a look to see if there's any more um, protections that we can institute that would reduce some displacement. Um, the state has done a lot recently in the last couple of years, uh, so that will be an interesting um, analysis. Taking a look at creating uh, financial assistance programs for affordable housing preservation. And we do have some of, we do have some programs like that, and so it's really uh, focusing and targeting. Those funds that are available for that program, they're primarily, they are grant funds. Uh, looking at ways we can find uh, ways to help people become uh, homeowners. Especially low-income folks, that's the part of uh, building wealth in the community, when everybody. Uh, does well, then we're a healthy community. Uh, developing that uh, surplus land inventory and strategy, really a program and criteria around when the city. My apologies, uh, when the city has surplus land. Uh, running that through the criteria to see if, yes. Could this be uh, a piece of property that we could uh, offer to. Uh, a affordable housing developer, not every city property is going to fall in that category. But we should at least screen the property for that, knowing um, the housing issues that we're having in the community. Another uh, strategy I'd like to point out is talking about our mobile home parks management policy. Uh, oftentimes, mobile home parks really serve uh, a naturally affordable housing. Uh, component in the community. Uh, it's very important that we, especially as we think about TOD and as we think about. Uh, how these properties might increase in value where, you know, the homeowners own their. Their mobile home or their modular homes, they don't own the property that it's sitting on, they lease that property and. Um, making sure that uh, we have some safety nets in place and some policies in place that. Uh, those folks don't just get displaced. I should mention that uh, it has a webinar. A few weeks ago, but uh, that, that talked about state resources. They have for uh, mobile home parks uh, displacement and so. Um, making sure that the people that live there know that they have uh, somewhere to go. Uh, and that they, they can get some help. Uh, another really important thing is the multifamily tax exemption program. Uh, we currently have it on the books and we have it in specified locations. We think that it's important to take a look at this program more broadly. Uh, in addition, the state has authorized additional uh, years for the program than when. They originally had on, in the legislation, so. Um, want to make sure we update that and take full advantage of that in terms of um, incentivizing more housing production. Um, promoting the use of community land trust, that's uh, really goes back to that homeownership, um, where. The uh, low-income homeowners can purchase a home, they don't necessarily own the land that it sits on. But they get to realize some um. Equity as they make their payment. And then when they go to sell, they are afforded some equity and they build their wealth and then that. Home uh, again, goes to another low-income person or household and so. Uh, we haven't, we've only have one organization in this county right now that does community land trust, but. Uh, it is popular in, in other areas and so I hope that uh, that becomes something that um, we see more of. And uh, the other thing is really um, talking about. Some sustainable strategy for affordable housing funding. Um, this is always a challenge and uh, you know, the Fed provides some, the state provides some, uh. Uh, but there are other mechanisms out there and you know, what, what can the community tolerate in terms of. Being able to provide more um, public dollars for affordable housing. And so as I mentioned in all of those, it, it would be a, a monitoring component. Um, I'm going to just pause there, that's the majority of uh. Of the strategies and see if anyone has any questions and then after that, um. I wanted to just talk a little bit about there's some uh, changes that. Uh, we are going to suggest uh, be made to the plan, but uh, first. Can I answer any questions regarding all of that information I just gave you? Michael or Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes, I'd like to ask whether Commissioner Atkins or Commissioner Finch has any. Uh, comments about the process since they were involved with the advisory committee. And in particular, I'm interested in the rather lengthy and frankly, very good comment letter. That came in to us from the Everett Station Area Group. And whether or not that group was part of the conversation during the outreach period and whether these comments had the chance to be. Taken into account and drafting up the plan.
I can provide an initial um, comment on that and yes, they were involved in um, our chat session, so they participated in some of that. As you can see from the data, their letter though, we, we did just get that, um. And I think um, they definitely had some, some good points when I talk a little bit about what we might propose uh, to add. Um, I think you'll see some of that is coming from, from their comments. So I'll turn it back over to the. The Commissioner Finch and Atkins.
Commissioner Zalinski, I um, I must confess, I was not the best uh, uh, task force member. I, I was a victim of the pandemic relative to scheduling. And um, I think that's just unfortunately indicative of the time period that we're in, um. Uh, yeah, I think that, you know, a, a good example of that is we're, we're uh, having a developer chat session. Um, in the coming days, as opposed to in advance of the draft plan. As well as awaiting feedback from Rotary uh, later in this month, so. Um, you know, I, I think that it was great that the city was able to secure this grant, I think that um. Uh, obviously um, exploring housing opportunities for a variety of income. Uh, levels is incredibly important in growing our city. Uh, but I think the process from a public outreach perspective, uh, under more normal times. Uh, may have yielded a report that may have had kind of greater overall integrity. So I think that folks did the best they could with uh, with the available time and the outreach efforts they could make. But um, what I found in the time periods when I could participate was. Uh, community participation in large part, especially the loudest voices or folks that were in this industry. Um, often from a subsociation standpoint and were basically being paid to make comments. Because it was in the normal course of their business, so it would have been great to have more community input um, in an organic way.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so um, at least I'm, as Chair of the Rethink Housing Action Plan Advisory Committee. Uh, I definitely found that during the spring when we were doing our outreach, um, I feel like the pandemic especially. Uh, prevented us from being able to uh, really do the kind of outreach that was needed to um. Really strengthen this plan and uh. Make sure that community input was very much part of its DNA. Um, I, I do feel that if we weren't in this uh, current pandemic. Uh, that things probably would have gone differently, um, but another thing that I've, I've also found, uh, I've been doing quite a bit of outreach. Uh, myself over the summer in trying to get organizations involved with this plan and. Uh, coming up with some kind of comments on the plan and I've just found that a lot of organizations don't have uh. A lot of interest in, in the plan itself. Um, typically what I've found is uh, that some organizations will just, they'll, they'll take a look at it, they'll go, oh, this looks good. And then they won't give any further feedback or even want uh, me to come in, uh, me and Becky to come in and like present to them and whatnot, they're. Uh, they're just fine with it as is. Um, and so I, I think that's another aspect on um. With regards to uh, a lack of outreach is just that a lot of the organizations that I feel do need the outreach to be done. Um, I feel like haven't had this outreach done in the past and so they're kind of unsure. Of what to do or where to go because of that. Um, that it's just so, so new to them to have the city coming to them asking uh, for feedback, but they uh, they're. Just don't know exactly what more to do with it. I, I hope that answers your, your questions a bit.
Thank you Commissioners and Becky.
Are there any other Commissioner comments or questions? I might have a comment, this is Commissioner Lavra. Um, yeah, looking at um, the plan, it, it overall seemed really good, I. I just felt that um, the urban corridors portion is, it lends itself to using. Public transit, but it, I, I think it will be very challenging to make Evergreen Way pedestrian and bike friendly and. To me, that's one of the most challenging aspects.
Good comment, yeah.
I can see it being helpful for using public transit to go up and down the corridor, but. You know, getting around on foot could be scary.
Yeah, and we're thinking about um, just, you know, the neighborhoods surrounding. The corridor and making sure that the neighborhoods have good access to and from the corridor.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I saw that same comment in the Everett Station District Alliance uh, comment letter and it came with a list of reading materials. Uh, I know ULI Urban Land Institute has been doing some work on urban corridors and. Uh, that's obviously Evergreen Way is uh, well, you can extend it north and south and it looks fairly similar uh, from Canada to Mexico and then. Those are all over American cities, so that everybody's wrestling with and I look forward to reading more about it and seeing how we can. Um, make the best of both the transportation accessibility as well as that uh, that kind of neighborhood node, three-dimensional. Uh, aspect that, that people like to live with.
Great, thank you Commissioners, I'll wrap us up here, um. I'm not going to read, so all of those actions that I just talked about, they all fall in these buckets here of short-term meaning. You know, we'll get to them within the next couple of years prior to our COP plan update. Those mid-term actions really lend themselves to being incorporated into that uh, process, the COP plan update process. Um, and then the long-term and ongoing actions, yeah, they primarily fall into that uh. Monetary um, bucket of work and uh, that's something that. We think we can get the Alliance for Housing Affordability, uh, uh, if you remember Chris Collier being coming here, um, I think that's something that he. That group can uh, help us with. Um, I, I like that idea because they uh, they can support that work and um. When it takes some of the um. I said, I was going to say burden off of staff, but um, you know, I think they're more able to keep up with, with that uh, at this stage, so. Uh, and again, I am not going to read all of these, but I am going to share a little bit about what you can expect. Could council approve the plan, uh, what we would be working on in the next year or so. Um, that would be uh, looking at the accessory dwelling unit development code and program. Um, looking at ways to expand the housing diversity. Uh, that will require a lot of making sure that we're. Doing some extra outreach to uh, property owners and community members. Looking at design guidelines, looking at those tenant protections and assistance. Uh, we want to do that study for incentives. And then because we've already been uh, starting to look at surplus lands uh, for other reasons, we want to make. Uh, make this a quick item too of building our surplus land uh, program and strategy. Uh, so those are the short-term actions and then um. These are the midterm actions, again, I'm not going to read all of these to you, uh, these would be COP plan worthy items. And then these are the long-term ones. So let me quickly. Uh, I want to just go through a list of uh, sort of changes that we would propose, so the rethink. Housing Action Committee did ask us to include some additional policy and strategy language. Around support of homeless housing options, so we would, we will be adding that. Um, some of the items that uh, staff thinks would be appropriate based on. Uh, we actually briefed council after the committee made their recommendations, so some of that, this is. Uh, input from the council as well as some public uh, comments. And that would be to strengthen our policies and action towards the footy goal. By making sure we include language that prioritizes people of low income, communities of color and historically underserved communities. Think we saw that in a con, that comment letter from the Everett Station District Alliance. We want to make sure that we're uh, making a stronger link between this housing plan and the adopted climate action plan. Um, we're going to move the, well, excuse me, the multifamily tax exemption work, expansion work. From the median term to the short-term work. Um, as well as the incentive study, we want to uh, move that, both of those were uh, suggested by the city council. Uh, we will update our appendix B, which was the culmination of all of the public input. Uh, make sure that gets into the final. Uh, make sure that gets into the final plan. Um, and we, we are, uh, we can complete our acknowledgement section and our executive summary sections. And then there's also some uh, minor editing that uh, we need to do, but would not uh, change anything substantive. So, um, Yorick, was there anything else on that um, that list that you thought of that I didn't um, capture?
Uh, the only other thing I'd mention is uh, we, the Department of Commerce has a grant program for implementation of the housing action plan that Becky and I were taking a look at earlier today. Um, that's two million dollars throughout the state. Uh, we'd have the ability to, to get some funding, perhaps uh, hire a consultant to smooth the path towards uh, one or more of these implementation actions. Um, managing such a grant and a contract takes work too. So we're, uh, want to make sure that uh, I guess it's worth it, but that's an exciting opportunity and, and we would be looking to one of the short-term action items or two, uh, that would be well encamped, encapsulated in a, in a in a contract. It's something that would be achievable for a consultant in a year or so.
Great, thank you. So this is, uh, any more questions? And then of course, this is our uh, recommendation if the commission is so accused to um, pass a resolution supporting the, the committee's recommended plan.
Thank you. Uh, we did have it on the agenda or to uh, close the public comment, but we had no public comment. So I'm questioning whether we need a motion.
Do they need a motion, Kathy?
I, I wouldn't, I, I think we're okay to, to continue. We, we gave full opportunity for public comment.
We were here. We, we were listening.
Yes.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion in support of Resolution twenty-one dash oh five?
Commissioner Atkins' motions.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Or discussion?
This is Commissioner Zalinski and I would second the motion.
Thank you.
So are we calling to the vote?
I gather we are, yes.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Acting Chair Lavra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, again, plenty Commissioners and um, thank you for the good discussion. And uh, we look forward to uh, the work ahead of us as you'll be intimately involved.
Thank you everyone, staff and Commissioners. Um, if we have no other questions or comments, we can adjourn the meeting. Well, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you Becky.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.